Things before we start the first case, one of the members contacted me about forty-five minutes ago and said he'd be ten or fifteen minutes late. So we'll take care of these things, and if he's here, we'll, we'll start. If he's not, we'll stop. So I guess the first order of business tonight would be to approve the minutes of our September meeting, September sixth.
Yes.
The thing that I, that I saw on it was concerning the Whipple case, said the work involves construction of a garage, which that was squared away at the meeting as actually a home.
A home, right.
Yeah. So that's in like the second sentence.
Yeah.
And it refers to it further down in the minutes, but in that particular sentence, it refers to it as a garage.
Do you want to read this, or do you want her to just to verify it's a house instead of a garage?
Yeah, we'll just, if we approve it, we'll just approve it.
With the change.
With the men, yeah, with the change.
Okay. You need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'm going that we approved the minutes out of one change on the Donald and Catherine of Desjardins is not a garage, the first two, three letter sentences. It's actually a twenty-four by twenty-four home.
Actually, it's the next case on Jonathan Whipple.
Whipple, I'm sorry, Whipple.
It, by the fourth sentence down, it says
House.
That it was, you know, not a garage, a house.
Right.
Yeah, just that one, just that one.
I understand.
Yeah.
A correctional on that, on the Jonathan Whipple.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bombara. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. To approve it as, as noted with one change.
One change.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes of September sixth are approved as noted. Assume everybody got a copy of the, of our meeting schedule for 2024? And last time we discussed this, we decided to move our meeting from July third to July tenth, and that's reflected in the new schedule. Other than that, there's no changes, so maybe we could approve the, the new schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve the zoning board of appeals hearing schedule for 2024, who was seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then I guess we have a report for, from the engineers for the North Village Development. And Ken, do you have a few minutes to go through this?
What you have there is the aspils that were submitted from the contractor for the, I believe it was phase three of Compass Point Road, the last phase of Compass Point Road. The engineer that did the review on it has asked for a lot of, a lot more information on it, some inaccuracies that he's seeing on it. So he reached out to them, but he has not gotten a new one or an update or anything. He hasn't gotten back to me with that.
Okay.
So that's what's regards to that. As far as the project's going itself, I issued another permit for twenty-four, twenty-six on Nautical Way, did another permit application in for twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-four. That would finish that inside of Nautical Way down to Compass Point. I haven't processed those, they just came in.
Yep.
On the right side of Nautical Way, naturally, they couldn't build in there because that's where they've been stopped filing all their materials.
Right.
They've been diligently moving out the materials.
Okay.
So the site looks a lot more organized, if nothing else. They still say, seem to think they're on track to phase four, Loop Road going around. They're hoping to start in spring.
Yeah, good. So that'll be good. All right.
That we're still on target with the affordables versus market rates and all that.
Okay, good. We also have a letter from the Board of Selectmen. They are trying to put together a master plan committee, and they're looking for a member of this board to participate. And I don't know if we have any volunteers. I don't know how often they're going to meet. I believe it's once a month, but I, I don't know that for a fact.
Would this be separate from the normal meetings, or would be added to? Is he going to get the outside help? Should be something different then, right?
I believe it's something different, John, because it reads that the first step in this process is to establish a subcommittee of the planning board comprised of Douglas citizens as well as members from several boards. So they're looking for somebody from this board. Anybody interested?
I probably will do it. It wouldn't be probably all the time, though. That would be my only problem. But I would have to zoom with him, too.
Yeah, I don't believe that'd be a problem. So.
Well, I nominate John.
Okay.
I must have talked to him earlier.
No, I didn't. So Mr. Palmer's
I nominate Mr. Bombara.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Palmer's nominated Mr. Bombara. So anybody who want to second that?
John can second it.
John can second it himself? Huh? I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. I can feel.
Okay. It's good, we do have some, a decision assigned, and I believe a invoice in here. So we have a decision and an invoice to pass that around. Have everybody sign it?
Sure. There's only two in here, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, there's two copies of the decision, and there's one invoice.
Look at that, it looks like it fell down, look at the dirt.
Mike?
That's what happened when you worked on it.
We just, doing a little housekeeping, we approved the minutes of last meeting. We approved the schedule for the 2024
Yeah.
meeting, and Mr. Bombara was just nominated to join the master plan committee.
Nice.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chairman.
Mr. Palmer was so kind to do that.
I was kind.
And right now, we're just passing around an invoice and a decision to be signed.
Did a lot of work while you're not here.
Yeah.
That's good.
Quickly.
Sorry, everybody, for my tottiness, but sometimes you can't avoid it. But I made good time.
I went to Boston, David.
I was in Plymouth at ten minutes. Six.
The tires touch the ground?
Luckily, they wasn't hiding in bushes.
Yeah, I know.
We also got a report on North Brown as well.
Oh, you did that, huh?
Yeah, we just did it.
In good shape?
Yeah, everything's going
You can sign it if you want.
Reasonably well.
I can sign this while we're doing that.
Yeah. Okay, the first agenda item is a public hearing for Steve Flag, case number two zero two three dash one seven, Three Huff Road. The date of his application is ten ten twenty-three, and the following was posted in the town hall and also published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and reads as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at seven P M. on Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Steve Flag is requesting a special permit in an R A. zone district pursuant to M G L. Chapter forty A., Section nine, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section nine point three, Section three point four point five, nonconforming, single and two-family residential structures, to reconstruct a single-family home on a pre-existing nonconforming lot on property located at Three Huff Road, Assessors Map, one one one, Parcel forty-four. Any persons interested in or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. All right, and hearing tonight's case will be Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forget, Mr. Bombara, and myself. I have confirmation from staff that all of the certified mailings have been returned, and see applicant or their representative here?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, Brian Fogg from Myrick O'Connell, one hundred Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the petitioner, Steve Flag, along with him is his wife Julie, and our engineer, Kevin Quinn from Quinn Engineering.
Okay, if I can just interrupt you for a second. You just need to get right in front of the attorney. The cameras normally swivel, but then they're fixed, and they're fixed right on where you're standing, so.
Right here, we're good?
Right there would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking care of your administrative business while we were waiting to get a full panel. We appreciate that, having us for continuance. So as was mentioned, this is a special permit application to reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family home at Three Huff Road along Manchog Pond. We were replacing it with a new home for Steve and Julie. The existing home is, has been in place since nineteen eighty-four, has a square footage of about nine hundred square feet. It's been unaltered for at least ten years, making it legally pre-existing nonconforming. Steve and Julie bought it in twenty sixteen and look forward to a new home on this nice spot on the pond. Section three point four point five of the zoning bylaw and Chapter forty A., Section six of general laws allow a reconstruction, extension, or alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family home like this. It's what we call a Section six finding special permit. Board standard of review for this type of special permit is a finding that the modification would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. We think this proposal meets that standard. The home would have an overall increase in the footprint of the current home, but would be improving a number of setbacks. The existing zero-foot setback in encroachment along Parker Road would be improved to six feet. The setbacks to Huff Road and the pond would continue to comply with dimensional requirements. Pre-existing nonconforming setback from Seven Huff Road would be extended from seventeen point four feet to fifteen feet. So there would be no new nonconformities proposed. Only one nonconformity, which is the setback to Seven Huff Road, would be extended by just about two feet. Given that this reconstruction will result in a modest, modern home with minimal extension of a single setback, we believe the home would be an improvement to the neighborhood and increase property values. We believe this allows the board to make the finding that the modification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Mr. Chair, if I may approach, I have three letters of support
Okay.
from three of our neighbors.
All right.
One from Vicar to eight Parker Court, one from La Costa at four Parker Court, and one from the Snow family at twenty-five Huff Road, supporting this proposal by Steve Flag.
Okay.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to take your questions. We've got up on board images of the, of the plans that we submitted. Again, happy to take your questions, appreciate the time.
Okay, what I'm going to do is open it up to board members to ask questions, or make comments, and then we'll open it up to the entire room.
Right.
So if there's any board members that have questions on this application?
More statements than questions. Mr. Chairman, if I may, is in popular nineteen forties, there was a permit that was written for this building, nineteen sixty-one, to build that particular home that's, that was in fact now, we find out from Mr. Flag, that the house had burned down and hadn't replaced it. If you look at the bylaws, the town does say that. It's usually two years, but this one says three. And the, the construction part of it, there are, if they were to build it within those two or three-year periods, you could go for a special permit if you wanted to move it, expand it, or anything like that. I particularly find this unbelievable because the laws were built. So different back then that this is all against, you know, you're almost telling the guy, you had the house, it burned down, maybe you couldn't afford to rebuild it, and you lost it. So you cleaned it all up like that, and it stayed there for many, many years. Then to say you can't do it is concerning to me, because if I could go back and issue this board, there was a development that was in town. I ain't got the exact dates, and who was on here at the time was Pam Palhoms. And there was a discussion that came up, there was a nonconforming law, it's all, they're like an eight and a half a piece. A gentleman bought a lot and kept it for himself for a retirement fund. And of course, time went on, he passed it on to his son-in-law. He had to come before us, and we gave him that, because it was still a, it was a nonconforming lot back then, I mean, after it expired. But we ended up giving the right to build a home there, you know? So I find, if you looked at the, if anyone has gone down to this place, the gentleman, Mr. Flag, is paying five thousand dollars for a, looks like a home that's there now. And I understand, I just, I can't fathom, how can we say no to this? I just can't. In a home that's, I mean, it's there now. I took photos, if anyone wants to see them. But even if you pull up the assessment field from the Town of Douglas website, I mean, that's pretty spectacular place. And he's got the area, and he's not taken up that much more of it. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I have to vote yes for this, me personally, because if those situations come up with something like that, I find it wrong that we can almost just, just come up and say, you can't have that because it burned down and you didn't do what you're supposed to do. But Mr. Flag bought it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the bylaw.
He did no, but I'm against it of saying no to this. I say yes.
That is the bylaw, though, John.
No, I know.
In that other case you're referring to, I think there was lack of frontage.
Yeah.
If I remember right, there was a lack of frontage on the one you referred to, had adequate square footage, had adequate setbacks, it just lacked a few feet of frontage. So, anyway, any other members have questions or comments?
I do, if nobody else says.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
The lot you're referring to, that's an acre and a half, is on U Street, is the one that you were talking about, and that was a pre-existing nonconforming, there was never a structure built on it. So it's a totally different situation than what this particular lot is. This house, from what I understand, was burnt down in the seventies, and then a trailer was put on there. The bylaw is typically two years. This town chose to do three years, so you actually got a bonus for the rebuild portion of it. That's the first part of it. The second part of it is, in this application, it refers to front yard setback being six feet. So I find that along the old Parker Road is how it's labeled on here, his actual frontage is Huff Road. So that's a sideline setback. That's just splitting here, and I get that.
If you look at the surrounding properties, they all have a deeded right to go down to the old dam there. That's a, that's an easement for them. The, yes, we could grant the variance on using that and putting this driveway across that easement, but then the town would have some liability moving forward on that. You would have to show some sort of permission from the, from the deeded property owners on that in order to use that space. Where the driveway comes across Old Parker Road. If you look at the surrounding properties, they all have a deeded right to use that. If you go up to Mr. Snow's property, I believe he's deeded to use another easement that's up the other end of, of that area.
If I may, Mr. Chair, are you referring to the existing driveway or a proposed driveway?
This plant that you're going to put
Yeah, the proposed driveway.
Yeah. That's an easement for, a deeded easement to neighbors that are in the area.
Yeah, I understood.
And that's not their frontage along that, that's not, that's not a road. And maybe at one point, when the dam went across there, it was a road, but then it got somehow or another got transformed into, Parker Road went around, Huff Road comes down, and that became an easement for the abutting property owners to use for access to the pond.
Go ahead, Ron.
I don't think you got it quite right, Mike, because the Manchog Pond, where that, where this place goes across, all right, that was the existing pond. White Machine Works straightened that out and built the dam so they could have control over it. But the original pond is, is, is there.
Correct, but if you, if you
That's all I'm saying.
No, but if you, and I appreciate, you'll know more about that than I would, because I haven't been in town that long. But if you look at the abutting, the neighboring properties,
Yeah.
it specifically says there's an easement to the old dam.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so that, I'm assuming that's the old dam that was there. You can still see where the road was on both sides of it, and it came across. So there, there's a challenge with that. And the, the bylaw, I'm not saying I agree with it or whatever, it's, it was what it currently is.
Yeah.
That's the challenge to get past that, is there was a structure on there, and from one of my understanding is that it burnt down in the seventies. This was a trailer, we have pictures of it, it was a trailer there, and then somebody built some sort of roof structure over it. Is there a foundation? I have no idea. I don't know what it is, I didn't dig into it. I've been down there, I, Ronnie, myself, and Dan actually went the last time this was in front of us, down for a site visit down there, just so we understood what it was. So we were there.
I also did, too.
Yep.
I was dumbfounded, because it was like
But the, unfortunately, the bylaw is the bylaw.
So what you're saying, you can't, we can't grant him an easement or a special permit?
I'm just telling you what it is. I'm not, I'm not going to say whether I'm granting or not granting, because I'm not here to influence the other members of the board. I'm just giving you facts of which I, that I know.
Yeah.
That's all.
So it's clear it wasn't done within the three-year timeframe.
Sure, sure.
You know, so that's an issue. And then I think the last time we heard this, there was an issue because there is a, a home there, there's a trailer there.
You can't see it.
Which actually looks like a home.
Yeah.
Because I went down and looked at the property, too.
Yep.
So it already, it looks like there's a house there at this point.
Yeah.
But it just doesn't, I kind of lean with John after looking at the property, but it doesn't matter, because it doesn't fit the, the, all the rules that are involved.
Yeah. So anybody else have any questions or comments on the board? Okay.
Is the town, is the town attorney?
The town council, yes.
Yes. Do you have any input on this?
So when I read through the application, I also had a bit of a reaction to the word reconstruction, because I agree with you, I don't think that's quite accurate. I didn't see any material, you know, anything in the application materials, but what was there in the seventies, what burned down, right? Typically, the rule you were saying pursuant to statute is you have two years after some type of a catastrophe to rebuild on the footprint, right? We don't know what the footprint was as to what was there before, there, there's nothing in front of us. We know there is a structure there right now. It is nonconforming, but it's been there for more than thirty years, almost
It's exceeded ten years, so.
Right. So I, the portion of the bylaw that governs, from my standpoint, and this is backing what the building commissioner said as well, would not be the reconstruction. It would be whether the, whether you can make a finding that what's being proposed does not substantially increase the nonconformity that's there right now. So I would, my, my only input would be, I don't believe it's accurate that the bylaw doesn't give you an avenue to approve this. I believe the bylaw does give you a potential avenue. There is, you know, quite a bit of sort of overlap and interplay between Sections three point four point three, three point four point four, three point four point five, regarding variances, special permits for extensions of pre-existing nonconforming uses. And ultimately, it's up to this board to interpret its bylaw, and should there be any, you know, further, you know, any, you know, thing in court over it, the, the board gets deference on interpreting its own bylaw. But, you know, I just want to point out that I, I don't
So it's in between somewhere me and John?
I, well, I, I just, I don't, I don't think it's a reconstruction case. That's, that's my, if it were a reconstruction case, I, I would, I completely agree, that there's a, there's a three-year limit, and that three-year limit expired right around the time I was born, so, you know.
See, that's part of my point, because of the, the fact that you could do, change it around after you, that catastrophe happened, and that you could get, you know, a variance for this or a special permit for that, and move, move the house around and do something. I mean, even, even my home, where I am, it was a nonconforming lot. It didn't burn down or anything like that. But my property was five feet away from the, you know, the line, and my sidewalk is in my neighbor's house, you know? And the building commissioner at the time said to me, can you help us out and make it less nonconforming? I was like, sure. So, I mean, so I understand what you're saying, Mike, to dig into this, and like I said, I read it all, and, and again, it gives you the right to, as you said, to special permit or something like that. So that's my feelings, it's still my feelings, so.
What about the issue that I brought up about the driveway going across that deeded easement?
That, that's a great question. I didn't see anything about that, you know, in the materials, and I certainly haven't done a, you know, a title search on any of these properties, so this is news to me.
All I did is I went to the assessors office and had them pull up, the deed being, at one point, at one point in my life, I was a lake resident in a different community.
Sure.
And so I'm familiar with the deeded rights for beaches and things like that. That's what prompted me to leave and look it up. And then there was a question about this easement. Everybody says that, that it's an easement, some people say it's not an easement. So the easiest way is look up the deeds and find out if it is. And if it's written in, in abutting properties
But, you know, I just want to point out that I don't think...
So, it's in between somewhere me and John?
I, well, I just, I don't, I don't think it's a reconstruction case. That's my... If it were a reconstruction case, I would, I completely agree, that there's a, there's a three-year limit. And that three-year limit expired right around the time I was born, so, you know.
See, that's part of my point, because of the fact that you could do, change it around after you, that catastrophe happened. And that you could get, you know, a variance for this or a special permit for that, and move the house around and do something. I mean, even, even my home, where I am, it was a non-conforming lot. It didn't burn down or anything like that. But my property was five feet away from the, you know, the line, and my sidewalk is in my neighbor's house, you know? And the building commissioner at the time said to me, can you help us out and make it less non-conforming? I was like, sure. So, I mean, so I understand what you're saying, Mike, to dig into this. And like I said, I read it all. And again, it gives you the right to, as you said, to special permit or something like that. So, that's my feelings. It's still my feelings, so...
What about the issue that I brought up about the driveway going across that deeded easement?
That's a great question. I didn't see anything about that, you know, in the materials, and I certainly haven't done a, you know, a title search on any of these properties. So, this is news to me.
All I did is I went to the S.S.'s office and had him pull up. The deed being, at one point, at one point in my life, I was a lake resident in a different community.
Sure.
And so, I'm familiar with the deeded rights for beaches and things like that. That's what prompted me to leave and look it up. And then there was a question about this easement. Everybody says that it's an easement. Some people say it's not an easement. So, the easiest way is look up the deeds and find out if it is. And if it's written in, in abutting properties or nearby properties as far as being an easement to the old dam, I'm pretty sure it's an easement.
So, the way an easement works, and I'm, I'm not sure I'm gonna directly answer your question, but I've spent a lot of hours in land court and way more hours in my office studying this stuff. The, the property over which an easement runs is the burdened parcel. So, there's a number of ways that easement could be formed, and I'm not sure I have enough information to say one way or the other. But one way would be a prior owner of that parcel, or the subject parcel here, would have had to have deeded...
Yeah, I don't know who owns it. Even on their plan, it says undetermined. Status not determined, it says on it.
So, if it's shown on a plan, that doesn't necessarily mean folks have rights over it? Does that make sense?
On this plan, yes. But in a deed, they would have rights to it. If it's in their deed, they would have rights to it.
Maybe. I don't mean, I don't mean to be cute, but
No, that's fine.
If in the deed to my house, it says that I have the benefit of an easement, we would have to chase that chain back to wherever that comes from. So, if my deed says I have a right to pass over my neighbor's property, that only makes it true if we can chase that back to a source where either somebody who owned my neighbor, probably somebody who owned my neighbor's property deeded a right to somebody who owns my property. So, you know, I, but I don't know the answer to that question, because I haven't done the homework on it, quite honestly.
First of all, we're, we understand that there are, if there are private rights, we're not trying to extinguish them here. And we're certainly not, we're not thinking that the board has the authority to do that. If there are private rights, we'll be subject to them and subject to enforcement of them. But in terms of the access, we wouldn't be impeding, if there are private rights to the pond through that strip, we wouldn't be impeding them with this, with this driveway. If anything, the removal of the existing home, which extends over the lot line into that area, this would be improved with this reconstruction, moving the home out of that Old Parker Road and further into the heart of the property. But again, we're not, we're not looking for the board to verify or confirm whether or not we're impeding any private rights. And we're not attempting to do that here. If we're subject to private rights, we're subject to private rights, and we'll have to deal with that. The other thing I just wanted to mention was talking about the provisions regarding reconstruction following a fire. My reading of that is something that can be done without a special permit. And we're certainly not seeking that, to act into that provision of the bylaw. That's something that can be done without a special permit. The reconstruction we're looking at, and the language, the term reconstruction is specifically used in Section 3.4.5, is this type of reconstruction, reconstructing a pre-existing non-conforming structure by special permit under that Section 6 finding. That's, that's what we're here for. You know, we didn't own the property when this fire happened. We didn't own the property when the existing home was put into place. But I know that under the, under the current version of Chapter 48, Section 6, this structure is pre-existing non-conforming, and by statute is allowed to seek this type of a special permit, separate from this fire issue in the past.
Okay. I believe that the last time this case was in front of us, there was discussion about what you're referring to as home is in fact a trailer. So, you're trying to replace the trailer with a home?
No, we're looking to replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family home with a new, less non-conforming, single-family home. That's what we're looking to do. I mean, this is assessed as a single-family home. It's treated as a single-family home. Again, we weren't here when it was assembled the way it is, but for all intents and purposes, it's a single-family home and benefits from this section of the general laws and the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Ken, do you have anything?
I would just question, you know, with the determination to say it's a single-family home, if it is actually a trailer that's been modified. I would consider it a mobile home at that point, at best.
Mobile homes are not allowed in Douglas.
And I don't, I don't think if you went out there, you would say that this is a mobile home. Again, the methods of construction, how it came to be, you know, that was before us. But for all intents and purposes, right now, it's a single-family home, pre-existing non-conforming, that encroaches into neighboring property and has separate violations, and this proposal would improve that considerably. The alternative is this just stays in place indefinitely, which I don't think is to anyone's benefit.
Okay. Mike, go ahead, Ron.
Is it, the modification of the trailer is, is what? How many rooms are in the building now? Or what does it contain in the building?
What is it currently contained?
Yeah.
See, what's the current?
Ah, two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms right now.
It's two bedrooms down there?
Ken?
I would still contend that, you know, what the determination is as far as it being a mobile home, if there's no foundation under this structure, and the, and the foundation, for lack of another word, that you're calling is the foundation, is a trailer. It's a trailer.
Yeah, the, the trailer's not acting as the foundation. If you look at the picture, he's got four-by-fours that are running down in the front of it. I would assume there's some sort of footing. That's what's supporting the roof to keep the weight off of the trailer itself. Well, I guess the only, the other question we could have is, is the trailer still inside that structure?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that.
It's the applicant.
Can you be able to, be able to speak to that?
I'm not too sure of myself. Come on, you sell trailers.
I know.
Okay. All right. If nobody has anything else at the moment, I'm gonna open it up to the, to the room. So, if anybody has any questions or comments on this application, you just need to be recognized, state your name and address for the minute, and you'll be allowed to speak whatever's on your mind. So, ma'am?
Yes. My husband and I...
I just need your name and address.
I'm sorry. Marilyn Klosak.
Okay.
11 Crow Street, South Bracton.
Okay.
What else do you need?
No, none. Just need to know what's on your mind.
We are in the butter, on the probably west side of the flag property. And there is a fence there. That, let me stop. You were discussing whether that is a trailer, and it is. There's an axle underneath for the wheels. We have that white, there's a white fence up, and it was put on the property that we now own prior to our purchasing. And I just find that the way the petition for the variance reads is vague for a legal document. Number one, the language is vague. It says, petition to reconstruct
Right.
to a single-family home or to reconstruct a single-family home. Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, we do.
How does it read? Because I couldn't hear what you people were saying.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry that I have to...
Give me one second here. This says that they're looking to reconstruct a single-family home on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot located at 3 Huff Road.
Then the application...
Consist, to reconstruct what?
Actually, that's what the, that's what...
What is that referring to on that property? That, what they were discussing, that was, that was a trailer. It is a trailer. If you look underneath, you can see the axles, and I don't know if the wheels are there or not, but it was moved there prior to the flags. They inquired, I'm sure, about building there, and they were told they couldn't. And the, and I have, I'm familiar with that property for a long, long time, and the people who owned it. And it was always understood that you could never not, an existing structure down. That, so the people, the previous owners to the flags, who used to have a camper, I have one of the public campgrounds on Mantechog Lake, and there are a couple, I think. They took the trailer and they embellished it, and to make it look like a whole of structure home of either wood, stone, or brick. It's none of those. Are they reconstructing? They're not reconstructing the existing trailer on there, are they? Or how do they do that?
Well, they're referring to...
It's not made of wood. It was embellished to look very nice, and, but it's not a permanent wood structure with a foundation.
Okay.
It's a trailer. Now, how are they going to reconstruct that? Or are they just going to move it off the property and start from scratch in their new home?
Okay.
Can you tell me?
Well, that's what we're here to discuss.
That's what we're here to talk about.
Moving that existing trailer that's there, is that reconstructing it?
This is what we're trying to hash out tonight.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to work it all out.
Yeah, this is what we're talking about tonight, trying to, trying to get to a conclusion.
Number one, it's vague. It's inaccurate, because they're saying a single-family home. A home can be anything. It could be a tent. That's a trailer, which is embellished to look like a regular, single-family home. And that people use it as such, but it still remains a trailer. So, that wording, I think, in the petition is inaccurate.
Yep.
It's vague, and it's possibly deceptive. Not, I don't know who wrote it. Who wrote the petition?
The applicant filled that out on the application, so...
But I think that ought to be changed to be more accurate.
That's what we're here to discuss tonight, so I appreciate your input.
Like I said, I could not hear
Okay, understood.
All you people talking to each other.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ron.
Is the, is the building now? I mean, is it more leaning to a, to a, some kind of a cottage, or is it more leaning to a trailer as it stands now?
Yeah.
Because it has been modified. What is it modified more to a, to the home size? In other words, if you took the axles off the trailer, is it more, fit into some kind of a...
Yeah. I would say if it's, if it doesn't have a foundation, it's not a, it's not a home. It'd be my personal thought, but... Ma'am?
I have a question. I'm Dawn Wilson, and I'm at 11 Huff Road in Douglas.
All right.
In the bylaws, does it state anything, because I've heard through the years that in Douglas, you have to re-keep one side of the building still there. You can't, like, knock down your whole thing and then build from that? Is that part of the bylaws, or is that something?
Not any longer. Not any longer. People, people would sometimes attempt to do that to escape these, the setbacks.
Yeah.
So, they would maintain one wall, so they don't have to get a variance on that setback and build off it, so they don't become more non-conforming. But that's not a typical process, practice, and it's not in the bylaws for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Les?
I'll speak. David Wilson, 11 Huff Road in Douglas. You guys were encountering about prior owners. I could give you, I could give you their name and the telephone number if you'd like to touch base with them. Their name were Wilford, who has passed, Doe Plays, and Lucille Doe Plays. That's who they bought that was from, the trailer. So, if you need that information, I can get that to you. The main, main portion of that, right down the center, is a trailer. It's got axles, wheels, and there's no foundation. The stairs, if you're looking at that from the property, the stairs on the right-hand side, which would come out of their, one of their bedrooms, also, those stairs are on the right-of-way currently. So, calling it a home is sort of deceitful, I think. It's not a home. It's a trailer. I'm 58 years old. I've been down there all my life. They, Lucille and Will tried several times to put a house on that, and they were repeatedly, repeatedly denied. They weren't able to do it. So, what they did was to build a porch off of, off of the front of the trailer and left it like that for a couple, I'll say maybe several years, two or three years. At that point, you guys would be able to look up as far as permitting goes. But they enclosed that and made a room off of the original trailer, which is now enclosed, and then built a porch on, on that, and at the same time, went over the front and the backside of that with a roof. So, if you didn't know, you would say, yeah, it's a house. I've been there 58 years. I know what's there. I, I used to visit with them all the time. I've sat on both porches, which is what the living room is now, and on the, on the, on the new existing deck that's there. And I think that Mr. Flag is being not truthful when he says that he doesn't know whether it's a trail. He's in the business of selling trails. That's what I have.
Anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Ma'am?
One other thing. My concern also, if they were able to do this, would be, and I haven't looked at all the plans, my well is fairly close to Huff Road. And I'd like to know what, if they were allowed to do it, how far away would their sewerage be from my well? I'm sure that's a concern of, of the Klosaks as well.
Right, and that would be a border health issue.
They wouldn't be able to put their septic system any closer than 100 feet from your well. There's no possible way. And looking at the plan, it looks like they're gonna be...
So, that would go, that would go as well with the Klosaks? I don't know how you can put a septic system on that property.
The border health would evaluate to see where all the neighboring wells are. They would not give them a sign-off on it unless they met that. They weren't, not gonna give any variance on getting any closer to a private well with somebody else's septic system. You could do it on your own property through your own well, but you couldn't do it on a neighboring property.
Ma'am, did you have?
Hi, Charlene Lashwell. I live on 56 Parker Road.
Okay.
I also bought on the backside of them. I just, first of all, I agree with everybody. It is a trailer. It's always been a trailer. Nobody's ever been able to build on it. And even if you do allow it, what they're asking for is way too large of a house on that piece of property. That's my biggest concern, is if you do grant it, they're just asking for too much house on a very small piece of property. That's mostly non-conforming.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Ma'am?
And the, talk about wells, Dave Wilson mentioned. Ours, we have a surface well very close to where they are putting a concrete driveway. There's a slope to that. It's not a flat piece of land. And the elevated part of the land is in the back, where that garage is going to be. And it looks, man, I'm looking at the gray area in there, in the back. The gray area, and then in there, in the back, in the driveway, it looks as though that driveway is going to go right against the property here. And this, the, if they're using that fence as a boundary line, it's not the boundary of our property. That fence was put on that property we currently own. And I don't know how far it extends east. If you look in the back of that map, I don't know what, what it means. Of course, it's a right, it was always understood, there was a right-of-way, and everybody has access to it, to either bring a boat down and put it in the water, or to, for the back people who are not on the waterfront, to be able to use that as a swimming area. There's also a right-of-way on the west side of the still property. That people in the back use for swimming are, they have a, I think they have a, not a deck, what do you call this? What do you call it? Where they can mo, they can anchor boats on the wind, and they use it for that. You'd have a lot of people swimming in that right-of-way. And everybody understood for years, and I'm talking 70 years, it was understood that on that particular property, or any of ours, if the total building is torn down, you're not gonna be able to build on it according to the new, the new bylaws.
Mm-hmm. Yep, well, you can build on it if it, if it was destroyed.
I'm sorry?
It can be built on if it was destroyed, if it's done within three years.
Yes, but it's well beyond the three years.
Mm-hmm, okay. You referred to that fence, and actually, we have a plan here stamped by a registered surveyor, and it shows the fence right on along the lot line, so-
Okay. I'm having that re-surveyed.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for an appointment to, because I-
Yeah, we're just going by what was presented to us came from a professional surveyor-
Yes.
And stamp, so that we need to-
Survey done also by a credit company.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a two to three lead time to get that surveyed, in our case. But I think, I think, I, that fence was not, well, I'm not saying deliberately, I don't know what the motive was, but it was not, it was on a prior owner's property.
Yep. Well, based on the plan in front of us, it seems to run right down the lot line.
Yeah, well, I'd question that.
Yep, you're certainly entitled to do that.
I would, you know, I would hope to get extended time until I can have it surveyed, re-surveyed, to find out where that west boundary is, whether it's on our property, that fence, and how far over does our property go.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
I would.
Yep.
Becky Laramie, 17 Huff Road. These are all my neighbors. We're all neighbors here. A little nervous to speak. Stand over here, just to make sure Dave's okay with what I'm gonna say. We've been in this community a long time, 1940s, 50s, our family screwed these homes. These are the newcomers. They bring a little bit of activity. They bring a little bit of noise, and I know that that can kind of be disturbing sometimes. And I understand everything that Marilyn's saying. I took a couple notes, just so that I would make sure I'm accurate in what I'm saying. I understand being nervous about having your wells, my well's sort of a little further away, so I don't have to worry about that. I'm, uh, one, two, I'm two houses away from these folks. But I, I'm not here to say I'm against them or I'm with them. I'm here to say, wow, I didn't even see the house. House is super pretty. I mean, it's a super pretty house that they're offering. I'm a little scared that Charlene said it was too big, because I thought it was moderate, and I, I kind of thought it was pretty. So if I come to you guys and say, "Hey, I want to build a house," I'm a little nervous that I'll want it too big. So I, I think it's a pretty house. I've done an extensive amount of work on the right-of-way there, extensive, and not everybody's deed has access to it. But I didn't see it affected by that, the plans, so I'm not really worried about the right-of-way, 'cause it's still ours, it's still attached to our deeds. It's not like they can take it away. And then, um, I don't really have anything to say about whether it's a house or not a house like that for you guys. You guys have a tough job. You gotta determine what the laws are and what your bylaws are, and you guys have to do that. But I think the house is beautiful, and if anything, it's only gonna bring up the value of our houses. Like, it's a kind of, I know you said it was a pretty little trailer thing, but it's kind of not that great-looking, and it's on the right-of-way.
Well, if light was-
You know, you just need to direct, all the conversations need to be directed here. Ma'am?
Rebecca.
Need to direct any-
So, so I kind of think what it would be, would be way better than what it is. And I'm, I know that we're all concerned about wells. I am sure these guys would be held to a very, very high standard next to our lake. Like, whatever their septic is now, is probably crummy, 'cause I know mine's crummy. So I would think they'd have to build a pretty cool, nice, fancy septic that wouldn't affect anybody. I don't think these guys are, were to help, they're gonna let them bring a bad thing in. So for me, I, I kind of think it would be better for our neighborhood. It might block your view a little, but I think it would make the, the neighborhood look nicer. If we got rid of the, kind of, the junky houses, everybody's house would be valuable, much more valuable. But it does block your view a little bit. So, I, I'm not supposed to talk to you, I'm sorry. So I'm not for or against, but I think it's a beautiful home, and I think it would add value to our little community, and I kind of think it's nice. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Again, we have a surface well, and it's much closer to the, where I'm, I'm concerned also about a runoff from where the garage cemented. Looks like the concrete goes way up to the boundary line, doesn't it?
That's what it shows, yes.
And our well, can you see? It's certainly less than 100 feet away.
Scale on here.
That's right there, on the corner.
Yeah.
Just off the left side.
Yeah, right here.
West side.
Yeah, but just looking for a scale. Right here. Yeah, it appears that it's, your well's within, I'm gonna guess, 10 feet of the lot line.
That's pretty close.
It's close, correct.
Did I hear somebody say it should be 100 feet?
That's from a septic system, so we're a little, we're, that's from the, from the septic system.
I'm sorry.
So we're a little off where we're supposed to be.
Yeah.
That's all border health issues that would be handled during, through the border health, has nothing to do with this board at all. As far as runoff from the driveway, if this was approved, that would be a building commissioner's role to make sure that he addresses any stormwater runoff, to make sure that it doesn't impact your property, or try to minimize it. We're only here to talk about whether or not this is allowed to re, to put this new house here, however we want to word it. I'm a little hesitant to go with how it's worded in the thing, because I've already had my opening statement as to what I, what I think. We're only here for the house, that's it. We're not here for anything else, and we already know, the attorneys already acknowledged that they're over, the stairs are over, the house is over, everything's over that line. So the, the existing one is. You can shake on your head all you want, I'm looking at a set of plans in front of me. So the existing house and the stairs go over the line? So we're only here to talk about the house, and that's it. We're getting way off, off-base with it. There's no, one minute, Les. There's no doubt in my mind this is an attractive house. That's not the subject for us to talk about tonight.
Right.
Right? We're only here to talk about whether or not they can reconstruct it. So we have to, or build it, whatever, however we want to say it. One minute, let me finish. And then, before you start, because you've already had four bites at the apple, there's a gentleman behind you that would like to add two cents to it. So we're here to be responsible for the bylaws that we have in town and see if there's any options to, to try to provide some relief. We need to be fair to the property owner, as well as the other property owners that are on the other side of the table. So we need to stay on topic and try to just talk about the structure and, and end it with that. As far as border health issues, this conservation, I don't know if they went there, that's gonna be something else. So if we get to that point in the conversation, I'm gonna make a suggestion that they talk to conservation before we even do anything, because if we approve it and conservation says move it, now they got a bigger problem. So just so you understand how the process needs to happen, we're getting way off where we need to be.
I agree.
Mr. Jim, Les?
You know, having removed trailers before this town and-
You need your name and address, please.
Oh, Les Stevens, 31 Brookside Drive. Sorry about that. I think, I think the thing to consider is, is you look at other lake communities, such as Webster and stuff like that, where there was trailers that converted into camps, that, you know. So if you consider it a camp, it's a home. If it, you know, because they came in in trailers and they, and they boarded them up and they made them into camps, and then those get converted into homes throughout the whole process. And with, you know, with the number of trailers, you know, removed out of lots that were conforming, you know, and they were replaced with homes, it's in the similar application to that. So I just want the board to think of that, because there's, there is other, you know, wet reservoir camps that got converted into full-time homes, removed, you know, that are now existing homes.
If it was, if it was originally designed to be a trailer or whatever on that particular lot, I could kind of sympathize with your statement. This is in the situation here. This was a home that, that had a catastrophic event. It was torn down, a trailer appeared on the lot, and some sort of roof structure was built over it. So totally different than what you just explained.
Ma'am?
One comment. The well that is very close to that where that garage is and which will be concrete is very close to that surface well. We don't have an artesian well. That's our water source.
Yeah, I understand. Unfortunately, it is a border health issue. It's not a zoning issue.
Border health and stormwater for the buildings.
You know?
All right.
So unfortunately, just-
It's a border health issue.
Yes, it is. Yeah, and if you have concerns, you certainly could discuss it with them, I'm sure.
So where are we at now?
Anyone else?
I mean, driveway and whatever, and what town council says, so.
Is there anybody else?
In fairness to the applicant, I still have questions in my own mind, as, and that I brought up, about these encroachment into the right-of-way easement, whatever it is, that's up to these guys that we're tied to the meeting to decide if it's, if it has any impact, right?
Right.
So if we're impeding on somebody else's rights to use that, we have to be careful of that. That's one of them. The second question that I have is about, is this actually, what is it? Is it considered a structure, or is it not considered a structure, right? We've heard people say that it has an axle under it, it was a trailer. Does it become a structure after 10 years? Because nobody pointed a finger at it. I don't know. So I would need clarification on that before I could be comfortable enough to, to offer my yea or nay to it.
Mr. George, you'd like to respond?
If you would, please.
Okay. You know, regarding the, the rights of way, I mean, if it were a public way in the town, I could understand us getting involved in that. But if these are private easement rights between private parties, I, I don't see how the town wants to, or necessarily should, or even has the ability to get involved in that. It's, it's private rights between private parties. We're, you know, we're not a court, we're not the registry of deeds, we're the zoning board of appeals, we've been, we, you-
Yes.
I'm just here in advisory capacity. I sit on a board, so I-
No, that's fine.
Confuse my role sometimes. But, you know, the, right now, they're asking for a finding that what they're proposing is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, right? You know, private easement rights don't really have much to do with that. Regarding the definition of structure, I think that's a good question. I mean, the zoning bylaw does have a definitions section in it, and structure is a defined term, as is mobile home, as is single-family home, you know, I would just, it's for you guys to discuss and interpret, but I, I would point out that 3.4.5 is non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. So you have some different defined terms there to parse out. I don't, I don't want to influence that too much, although I'm certainly here as a resource if you need me.
No, that's fine. Getting back to, to the driveway, okay? I can agree with you about impeding on somebody's rights and stuff like that, but we approve this plan as it is. The driveway doesn't even come out onto the road. It goes across another piece of property. I don't have the plan. You're going out another, over another piece of property, and it says that is not determined on that. It's stamped on their own plan.
Yeah.
So how, does the town have any liability in that?
So the question is whether our, your potential finding-
Correct. You can say ours, because you're not voting, don't matter.
Exactly. So I suppose the question is whether a finding from this board that the proposed uses not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood could be construed as an endorsement as to the propriety of the easement, that whether the town could get sued for that?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't see how that could happen.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
I've got one question answered.
Okay, sorry.
My understanding is it is an easement, and I'm right about it. If indeed it is-
The minute taker's not here, so she's gotta rely on someone stating their name and-
She's gonna have to say your name again, that's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. David Wilson, 11 Huff Road.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if that, if we can agree that it's a, a right-of-way or an easement, is there any way for you to tell, I haven't looked it up, who pays taxes on it? That's it, there's, there's no financial gain in the town for that sliver of property?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't look up, when I looked it up, I didn't look at to see who owned it. I was specifically looking to see who had rights to it, because it was, the last time this came before us, there was some discussion about people saying they had rights to those things. Instead of taking opinions, I just looked it up. It was easier for me that way, just to get some actual information. Now, I didn't take a copy of all those deeds to bring in, because I just need to find information for myself to help me make a better decision, not provide evidence for and against an applicant.
Right.
You would be surprised on how much, how many pieces of property in the town of Douglas that has just a number with no name on it. And I'm serious when I say that. And this is one of them. You know, there's no, no name on it. I called the assessments officer, he guys for this, and he just, his answer, you don't know who owns it. So, it's a, I mean, substantial amount of land, too, in certain places, because it was part of the, him coming in, I asked some questions about it, and he dug in and I took it. So there's a lot of, a lot of them I took.
Ma'am?
Becky Laramie, 17 Huff Road. That is definitely a right-of-way, but it's just as the attorney said, it's private. The town has no idea who owns it.
Nope.
I've, I have a couple attorneys looking at it, just so that we all know sort of where our boundaries are, and just to understand, it's a private road, so it's private. So how much of it is, like, can I fix it? Can I fix a pothole? Can I, you know, help the, the road have cleaner water coming off of it and stuff like that?
Yeah.
But the town has, they have no idea who owns it.
Right.
And it goes back to like 1932 or something like that, where the Huff family actually owned the land, and then you follow the deed and you lose it after a few deaths.
Yeah.
So you have no idea who owns it. There's, there's no-
I mean, the house that was built there that- I mean, the house that was built there that apparently burnt down, the permit was given in 1961. We had it on, but believe it or not.
That's crazy.
That's crazy.
So, but we do own, like, we all, we all in conjunction own sort of halfway point to the road.
The road, right.
But we can't do anything with it, it's just a right-of-way, so that we can pass it over.
As our attorney said here, town council is, it's not ours to bicker with, I guess I want to use the word to say yes or no. Well, so, anyway.
All right. Ma'am, one more time, go ahead.
Yes. If it's a private right-of-way, it's an access road, and you said it's private, nobody knows. I know the town of Douglas, at one of these former hearings, said that the town of Douglas does not own that right-of-way.
Correct.
It's an access road, but what if somebody had a trailer on that right-of-way?
Excuse me.
I don't know who owned it, maybe it was someone had a relative that put that trailer. That's not a public campground. It's not a public parking area for someone to permanently leave their car there and use it. And let's say possession is nine tenths of the law. If someone goes over and fixes it up or uses it as a private parking area for their own personal car, and they, and they claim possession of that, there's no taxes on it right now, nobody uses it, but it's, it's an access road. So, what happens if they, they, does, let's say, the Flag family, do they have a right to have a lot, say, for someone to put their camper on there?
Yeah, I'm not an attorney.
That's not what's before us tonight, and so they have a defined plan that shows where their property is, then what they're proposing to do is within the confines of that lot. If, we can't do hypotheticals of what's going to happen tomorrow, that's not what we're here for. And I'm not trying to be rude to you, it's just, we're getting way off. I want to stay on talking about what we're supposed to be talking about.
Yep. All right, one more time, anybody else want to speak on this?
Wait for John to come back.
He'll be back in a minute. So, at this point, John, nobody else seems to have any questions or comments, so we could close the hearing.
Chairman, okay.
Yep, go ahead.
If the board is unclear at this point as to whether the facts in the application, the facts on the ground give it authority to grant the special permit, if that's a question mark for the board, we would respectfully request that you not close the public hearing and continue the hearing so that we can provide additional information. I, you know, we are comfortable this is a residential structure, and the bylaw says a residential structure that's previously non-conforming may be extended, altered, or reconstructed. That's that section, not just the section regarding a fire catastrophe where you can rebuild without a special permit. We are comfortable that we fit within that provision of the bylaw, and that this may be done by Section 6.9 special permit. But if the board is not clear, or has questions in terms of not whether it wants to grant the special permit, but whether it can, whether the facts permitted to, if that's the case, we would ask you not close the public hearing, continue the matter, allow us to provide you additional information.
And I agree with that, that was a...
Are you requesting a continuance?
We would, Mr. Chairman, so we can provide additional information that the board is to be looking for.
All right. The applicant's requesting a continuance to our next meeting, which is the first Wednesday in December, and does anybody want to make a motion to accept that?
I'd make a motion to accept his request for a continuance. Second, does anybody know the date of the...
It's December.
December 6th.
5th?
6th.
6th. Make a motion to accept this, the request for a continuance until December 6th at 7:00 PM.
Correct, yeah, that's correct.
A second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I show town council some on my phone?
Well, we can do it next meeting.
Okay. Email it, though.
Yeah, can email it, though. We have a form here, if you're granted a continuance, you need to allow the board an extra 30 days to make the decision, so if you could fill that out.
Do you want it tonight or do you want this...
I'd like to do it tonight, if you could. And we'll have, why don't we say that it'll be continued to the 7:15, we do have another case already next month at 7 o'clock.
I'd like to amend my motion to accept the continuance as requested for December 6th at 7:15. My second, I know. I'll second it again.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, everyone's welcome to come back on the 6th, 7:15. Yeah, I know, I was seconds away from saying the same thing. Yeah, we're getting way off the subject now.
Tell me the stuff on toes.
No, no. I got big toes.
If it was John, I'd be stomping his feet. You couldn't sneak up on nothing. Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure. I hope I was helpful, I at least answered one of your questions.
Yeah, yeah. Will you be available if we need you for...
Absolutely, I'm planning to attend next month.
Okay, great, appreciate it, thank you.
We could be a touch via, you know, if anybody wants to send me anything to consider.
Just a couple of pictures of the building, we're just discussing.
Yeah, but I have, and I'd like some clarification on, I don't know any houses that have axles.
Yeah, I'm going to discuss that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice to meet you. Likewise. You excuse me for about 30 seconds.
Yeah. Town council, yeah.
Two seconds, be right back.
All right, the next agenda item is case number 2023-19, 141 Maple Street. The date of the application is 10/10/23, and the following notice was published in the Worcester Telegram Gazette and posted at the town hall, and reads as follows. "The town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Peter Reese's is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for side yard setback relief under Dimensional Regulations Appendix B to construct a proposed accessory apartment in an RA zone district. The property location is 141 Maple Street, MAP 194, parcel 19.4. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." Okay. The applicant, would you come forward? I just have one request, could you please remove your hat?
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, the floor is yours.
Les Stevens, the applicant, the owner, Peter Ruiz. We're just seeking some relief on about, you know, the side setback is 25 feet, we're doing a 20-foot side setback request. The addition is a 30 by 16 in-law apartment that's going to be for the planning board, so I thought it would be right to come before this board here to seek relief. And I've got a few past decisions that the board has granted similar RA, if you want to take one of them now, in other zoning areas, so we look to actually, you know, where's the best spot to put the addition, facing the house, you know, on the left side, there's a septic there as well as in-ground propane tanks, so that caused more, you know, the inability to build an in-law. And, you know, there's, the big issue is that this is trying to help the family, be able to provide for an elderly person who's in their retirement age, which I think we're all getting closer to, or some of us are already there. But, you know, with 35, three and a half million baby boomers retiring every year, you know, it's an ongoing situation that we'll have to deal with for the next 10-plus years, so that's why we're here. We did have talked to the Yabotters, and they had no issues that regarding any concerns regarding this variance.
I just had a question, and what you submitted, it appears that if this in-law apartment was pulled forward, you wouldn't require a variance, is that...
It would still be touching on the side, even if we pulled forward, it's alignment with the back of the garage, and tying that into the existing utilities, so that was the issue why I had to kind of flush everything.
If you look at this, Dan, he'd have to go 50% of the width of the building in order to get on, it'd be way, way too far up.
All right. Okay, well...
Put that in consideration with the septic, it'll have better access to it from the rear of the house, of the proposed addition.
And the proposed space is 400 and under 500 square feet, which the accessory apartment allows up to 900 square feet. It's already been reduced as much to be a, you know, single bedroom and a bathroom area, nothing beyond that.
All right. Any board members have any questions on this application?
No, just a comment, I personally have no issue with it. It's a minor encroachment into the setback of, it's less than 25% of what the requirement is. The only thing that I would suggest is, it would be, if it does get approved, that it would be contingent on approval of the accessory apartment, because we don't have any jurisdiction in that. I wouldn't feel comfortable just approving a structure not knowing what's going in there.
Yeah, and your intent is to go to planning board anyway.
Yeah, it's on the planning board agenda. I thought it would be right in the process to come before this board here, knowing that...
They're going to send you over here anyway.
Yeah, correct, correct, but just from the, you know, if we were, didn't, you know, approved that planning and coming here, I don't think that would be a fair situation to come before this board.
It's just awkward.
Yeah, I mean, so that's...
I wouldn't find it awkward, but questionable.
Yeah.
I asked the same question, so like, maybe you should be going in that first. It wouldn't be awkward, it would be John.
Yeah, so...
I too do an object, because you're looking at 4 feet, 4.2 feet, 4.6 feet, something like that, so, yeah, I took it right up there, so...
Still has 20 feet to get around the house, I don't know if the slope is there, but so has room to get around it. Needs to get around back.
You're getting older, you won't be able to.
My truck is there, right.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Does anybody in the room have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. Jim Mahoney, reside at 142, my neighbor, I just hope the board votes in favor of this applicant. Check.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Board want to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing's closed. The board like to make a decision tonight?
I'm ready to.
Okay. Let me entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, oh...
That's...
There was a number.
Oh, case number?
Yeah, you gave me the same thing out, but...
There you go. Trying to confuse it.
Case number 2023-19, as submitted.
Okay, we...
It has to go through a planning board, yes.
With, with the stipulation that a planning board approval.
I've got a question on that.
Go ahead, Ron.
If, this is, we're approving a, what are we approving?
We're approving the structure being closer to the lot line than what's allowed.
We're letting him be a little over 20 feet away from the side line.
So, and you want him to go where?
No, he has to, because he has an accessory apartment application, and that goes through planning board anyways.
Oh, okay.
So, all we're doing is we're saying, yes, you can encroach into the side setback, so then when he goes to planning, if he gets approved, he has a free run.
If this was just a regular addition, then I wouldn't have to go, but since we're seeking an accessory apartment, then it goes before that anyways.
One thing that I would do is amend my motion to include the plot plan that's submitted by, what's that, spotted data?
Yeah, spotted data and design.
Spotted data and design dated September 25th, 2023.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to approve the application with contingency of going to planning board to get accessory apartment approval. So, any further discussion?
No.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're approved, and we'll get it, decision drafted and get it to you as soon as possible, but typically it's about 30 days.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Thanks.
Father-in-law goes in for brain surgery Monday, he's going to be happy to hear that.
Can we take him, too? Can we take him, too?
Please, why don't you just push me in?
I got one, I got one. Happy normal.
Happy normal.
That's a great movie.
What knockers.
All right, we have any other business?
Remember when they knocked on the door?
Yep. Yep. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Palmer to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned at 8:32.